I asked, "How old are you?" And I keep missing him just to see what his.
Excuse me, I'm Jim, I'm trying to unmute you.
I'm just kidding.
Oh, you're here.
Sorry.
So it's Ken, do I call the?
Yes.
Yes. Alexander Hay. I'd like to call the Law, Labor and License Committee meeting to order. So, number one is the consideration of the appeal received by the city administrator for denial of an on-street handicap parking request and review ordinance 72-04.
Before we go there, why don't we just start off on record purposes?
Here. Here. So.
Would you like me to explain how we got here today?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the city received a request, like we usually do, on handicap parking. This was one. We had some generator restart issues, so give it a second, it'll be back on. So we received a request for 61 Miller Lane. I reviewed the request, which wasn't completed, have all the other documents needed, but if it does get approved, we can always require those. That's the proof that they own the vehicle, proof that they own the property, and proof that they have the handicap sticker. But reviewing the ordinance, the ordinance has specified, let me pull those up real quick, there's a handful of things that I'm supposed to review when that comes about. I've lost connection because of the power. All right. One of the ones that didn't meet the consideration was that if the property has adequate or available off-site, off-street parking, that it has to be denied by the city administrator. So that's what was denied on this request. And after the denial, I was speaking to the daughter-in-law of the applicant, and they were the ones that went ahead and made the official appeal to the city council. So in the ordinance, the city administrator is the one that reviews the ordinance, that makes a determination, and if it gets appealed, then it comes to city council. So since we had the law, labor, and license, I figured if it came to the March council meeting, that it would be kicked the labor law anyway, because it's an interpretation of the ordinance, and any modification would be approved. So we went ahead and added to this agenda.
As a committee, law, labor, license, are we just going to recommend, make the recommendation for the council meeting?
Right. And then council would have to vote to approve or disapprove. So that's the pathway forward. Because this one was appeal, I went ahead and did some, wrote down a little bit more, which I provided all of council, the particulars of the property, that the driveway is 12-foot wide, and just kind of some other particulars of the area, along with pictures of the property when I went out and measured and reviewed the property.
So, when I look at this, I would tend to recommend to what you did, which is deny based on what the ordinance is. It's just following the ordinance is what we're doing. But I would also, so the main thing here seems to be that cars often park right, per the letter from Denise, that cars often park right up against her driveway. So is there a code that says that you can only park a certain distance away from the driveway?
Yes, there's a city ordinance that the police department enforces, and it's two feet from a driveway, apron.
If somebody is parking right up against her driveway, it would seem like where they are on the street, that, you know, you've got, you know whose car this is because of the people that live there. That, one, I would say, have they knocked on the door and just talked to the person that's parking there, and just asked for some, a consideration from the person that's taking the spot. Two, if the car is within two feet, I would imagine that getting a couple parking tickets would teach somebody to not park there.
Yeah, and we could definitely have PD try to enforce that area more, and just, you know, for like the next month, like we do typical with parking complaints. I don't know if that's, you know, if that's an issue there or not, but that's something that they can definitely hit, and make sure we start letting people know they need a little bit more space for that particular property.
Yeah, well, I would make a recommendation to deny because of the ordinance, to follow the ordinance, which is to deny the.
Because of available on-street parking?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with what Andy said, it's an unfortunate situation, I totally understand it. You know, the parking in town in general, like on my street for example, I've got a big yellow curb in front of my house, it's yellow for about four or five months a year, and that wears off. And people park there, including myself sometimes. But yeah, to follow the language of the ordinance, it's pretty black and white, and I, Andy appreciate, I think your suggestion is a good one, to try and alleviate some of the issue of being in and out of the driveway. But as far as just our job and following ordinance, I think that you were spot on, Matt, you did a good job as well.
I agree, Paul, Liam, because it's just an unfortunate situation where, you know, we can't open up a can of worms too with a lot of these things. I drove by her place this morning to check it out, she does have a fairly wide driveway, I don't believe it's that steep, but unfortunately, maybe for her, it is considered steep, but if we start doing this for everybody, then where does it end? You know, I mean, we have an ordinance for a reason, and it is, she does have a nice driveway, a nice parking. And I agree with Andy, I think we want parking to be tight, I think that might solve the problem.
Okay. We're good with that one.
So does somebody need a second to recommend?
Yeah, go ahead and just do motion, that was going to be my question.
It's a motion. Yes. A motion to recommend.
A motion to recommend. Denial of the application.
Deny based on the ordinance.
And in the fact that you're under your investigation, and that there's adequate off-street parking, or that there's available off-street parking, and necessary finding.
Yeah.
Second question. Do we, all in favor?
All in favor.
Do we do individual votes, or does it depend on what we're doing?
Generally, unless there's a nay, we might do a roll call, but other than that, there's just, if there's any need for it.
So next, we have the review of the ordinance, chapter 36 pertaining to the planning commission.
I'd like me to kind of run through the staff recommendations, and then when we go to each one, either I can go over the whole thing, you can talk to me afterwards, or we can just go section by section, which is probably easier for any of them's opinion. Just to set the stage, the planning commission is heavily regulated by KRS, so there's very, you know, little changes that we can make, just to kind of set that up, and we do have, it's a part of KRS 100, multiple lines within that. The biggest change out of the members' term, paragraph A on the sheet here, is that, which we've talked about before in our ordinance, and we haven't followed for decades, one of the members is the mayor, and one of the members is a city engineer. You know, staff has agreed, and everybody I've kind of talked to has agreed it's not appropriate to have those two, even though it's allowed by KRS to have those on, it would be better to have citizen members, which is what we have now anyway. So that is the change. We've added citizen member, we've added the word citizen when it said seven members, because that wasn't added before, since two of them were, you know, staff engineer and the mayor. But citizen member is out of KRS, and it's defined there in KRS, so we've removed out everything about the city engineer and the mayor being part of it, so it will be a seven-member board, and the members who, you know, hold no other elected office. The other, the second paragraph, we also struck out again, talking about the mayor and the city engineer's term out of that. We added to KRS at the bottom about the staggered pattern, which we are having overall on all of our boards, which we're going to be fixing here over the next year, as we've gotten away from staggered appointments, most likely because people have quit in the middle, and we, the rule is if they stop in the middle of a term, their new term is the continuation of that term, it should start four years, which is probably why we've gotten off that, so that will be fixed moving forward.
Can you explain to me what the staggered is at first? I've tried to ask a couple people, and it's always confusing me, one, two, three, four.
So what you want to do is you want to stagger appointments, because if the seven members are on a four-year, well, at the end of this four years, you could lose an entire board, so you have no continuity moving forward. If you have them all staggered for seven, the most you'll have is two leave at a time. So that's why you really want to have it every year. So this year starts four years, next year could start a four-year term, you know what I mean? So that's the stagger, and that's the benefit, because like currently with our Board of Ethics, they're all expired, I think it's this month. So if they all decided not to renew, well, you have no continuity of how things move, because you always want, generally the chairman's going to be the most experienced, or knows how to run, and it's not fun to have a new board that you have three brand-new people on there who has no experience with the board. So that's the staggered part of it.
What's the plan moving forward is that you don't have to stagger them?
No, we will, we'll start staggering, because right now, we've got groupings, especially with this one, I think we have like three or four that are going to expire next year. So instead of, when we get to those, if we decide to appoint all those again, instead of doing them all four years again, we'll do one, two, one, or one, 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 two, three, four, just to stagger them out.
So for, in this, I see the word resident and citizen, and they're used in different places in all three of the ordinances we're going to be talking about.
There is resident, or is that?
So what is the definition of a citizen?
So the citizen, let me pull that real quick, the, do you have it? It does not specify, just, I know where you're going with it, by KRS, it does not necessarily have to be a resident, it has to be a citizen, so they have a definition of it.
Like citizen of the United States is what that probably means, or Kentucky?
Citizen means?
Citizen members means any member of the planning commission or board of adjustment who is not an elected or appointed official, so I can't be on it because I'm appointed, you can't be on it because you're elected, or an employee of the city, so Melissa can't be on it, county or consolidate local government. So it's going to be anybody that's not elected, anybody that's not appointed, anyone that's an employee of the city or county, or any government.
I would like to just, should we make motions to recommend for each of these items?
We don't, we don't need that, as we can just, well, we can discuss it, and if we need to do individual.
For each individual ordinance, if they're.
For, you know, however we want to do it, so I would like to make a motion to recommend that, two things, one, that you have to be a resident of the city to be on all these boards, and two, that we add a paragraph that gives the definition of a resident. The Fort Thomas Independent School System has a very good description and definition of residents, I don't know if we need to ask them for permission to use it, but I would suggest using that.
Okay. Do you have that, or you know where I can look it up real quick, just to make sure.
I would do, I can read it to you, then give it to you. It's bona fide, a bona fide resident is one who physically lives and sleeps within the city. The, the following do not qualify for residency purposes, owning or renting a home in Fort Thomas School District boundaries but residing elsewhere, building a home or having a contract on a home in the Fort Thomas School District, or, sorry, Fort Tom, City of Fort Thomas, while residing elsewhere.
Let me see that. So they can rent a house here, but they rent a house and live here, they can't?
If you are renting, you're a resident of the city.
Okay.
A resident of the city.
Please change your address.
But you have to actually reside, sleep here.
Okay.
And I'm certainly not telling you guys what to recommend, what to do, I will tell you that the reason we chose citizen members is because that was referenced in KRS, and that was the statutory language, but.
So, as far as I'm concerned, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm usually not.
You can disagree.
Just kidding. But when it comes to KRS statutes, we can't unwind them, but we can't tighten them.
Yep.
So if they say citizen, and we decide to define it as resident, then we are just simply tightening the screws a little bit, so that is, if we want to use citizen there, but we want to use a line that says we as a city only want residences per our definition, then I'm correct that we can do that, right? So I want to, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I thought you were finished, I'm sorry.
It's, this is big, for some reason, this last release has been a hot button, I want to be very clear on this for anybody that's listening or here, and this isn't just because of this particular ordinance, several months ago, a couple of people reached out to me about somebody that's on a particular board who is moving out of town. I was the one who brought it up to the city about possibly allowing business owners to be part of these boards. I thought, you know, people have earned the rights, they've been here a long time, they've done some good, but I was elected by the people of Fort Thomas, and, you know, not always my wishes are what I think is right, I was indifferent on the situation, and I just want to know, it's been overwhelming, overwhelming amount of people have reached out to me about having residents only on all these boards, and I, I can attest how often I've reached out to them about trying to find a solution for these situations, and I know some people argue that maybe that it's hard to fill these boards or whatnot, we do have 17,000 people in this town, and I do believe that we, that we've been advertised for a board that I've ever seen in all this.
We did, we did advertise for planning commission six months ago, and we did the application.
Three.
Well, I should do, but we found the third one.
So, it was the first time, right? And I know a lot of people reach out to me for boards, and I think this is something that the people felt very proud of, and that's kind of why I lean towards that, and I don't think I'm not for a business, because I own two small businesses, but I think we have a large pot to pull from, so I just want to be very clear that this is something that I brought up a while ago to try, I know I was indifferent, but people have reached out, so that people understand this isn't something that anybody in particular is pushing there, it's just.
And that's why, just didn't understand why the staff did make this recommendation, is that the planning commission specifically and the DRB are too challenging, because there are requirements, I mean, you do have to know a lot to be able to be on those boards, be effective on those boards, and we just didn't want to, in the future, limit the ability of doing that. It's still, at this point, and the reason we went ahead with this, it's still, at this point, council can still say, no, we don't want anybody that's a non-resident, but two councils from now, maybe in a position where they have somebody that is a business owner who owns a property in, you know, the city, who has a wealth of knowledge that we might want to tap into, this, making that change today would prohibit that from, you know, two cycles ago. That's the reason that council, or the staffs recommend, it's easier to make it wider, and the elected officials trim it down when they need it, as opposed to making the whole thing smaller, so there is no option to do that.
Yeah, I'd just like to speak real quick, I appreciate your comments too, and it all makes sense, and I've heard the feedback about the importance of residents on these boards specifically, not citizens, so thanks for the clarification. And I think, speaking for myself, I would prefer to have residents on all of these boards as well. I, but I also recognize, you know, this is kind of, in my opinion, when you look at these ordinances, it's similar to when we had the Grover Grant conversation, I always want to try to avoid boxing us into a corner, where if we do need the option, or we have a very qualified, let's say, business owner who's, you know, and I'll elaborate on that in a second, but a person who's not a resident, and it'd be nice to have the option to bring that person before council if necessary for approval. The key to me is that council, the three of us and the three other council members would have the option to approve or deny that person. So there you kind of get the jurisdiction where you can say, well, this may be a, pardon my, the words I use, but a fly-by-night or a transient business owner, somebody who's, you know, got a small window shop in town, but they're going to be gone in a couple months, that's a whole lot different than somebody, and I won't name any names, but, you know, really established people in town who frankly give all of their time and effort to the city, they just happen to live in, you know, Alexandria, for example. So I like having council with the option to be able to approve or deny, I think that's our job. And I do, a lot of that, I've talked to Matt about this, so I respect the city's position on it, I think that, I just am always cautious about painting yourself into a corner with the ordinance, because in four years, for example, then we might have to go revisit the ordinance, and that's not to say we couldn't do that, but if the committee wishes to recommend that we write this language into the ordinance, that's fine, I just don't entirely agree with it. But as I said, I agree with the concept that residents should be on these boards, but there are going to be instances in the future where it'd be nice to have the option, if a more qualified person that we feel is necessary, we'd have that option to select that person.
If I may, just real quickly, being, representing a lot of these boards as a staff professional, there's a lot of folks that may not be a resident that have a vested interest, you know, you mentioned that definition in particular, you know, if I'm a homeowner, apartment building owner, I have a vested interest in this city, as well as a business owner, and once again, it's all opinion, and it's ultimately your decision, just personal opinion, is that those people have as much, if not more, of a vested interest in this city as a business owner, or an apartment building owner, landowner, whatever. So I personally like the idea of not quite that tight of a definition as it relates to resident, but to expand that to include a business owner and/or landowner.
So one problem I have with that is that if you don't include the requirement that you have to be a resident, somebody that resides here, is we could possibly have all of these boards filled with all people that don't live in our city, that's possible.
That's extreme, but yes.
It is extreme, but, you know, Murphy's Law stuff happens, or what if half of the people didn't, and I would like to.
The council has that control, and that's what.
And council would also, if we get into a position where there is somebody that's just, you can't turn down, you have Nick Saban come coach your high school, you know, then hey, let's meet, and we'll, we can change it back.
Okay.
So, real quick too, I do want to say that the difference between committees and councils though, is councils are elected by the people, and we have to be residents, right? So we are required to be a resident of the city to make decisions for the people that elect us. These appointments are done by one person, even though they're elected by council, they're done by the city administration, the mayor, and yourself, which we value, but at the end of the day, the residents decide on us, you know what I mean, to make these decisions, they should, they should believe that, if they believe that the appointments should be done by residents also, I think that's something we have to consider as well, I think that's very important.
I think it is, but I also still maintain that they all have to be approved or denied by council, so at the end of the day, they are, they do come before us, and if it's a non-resident, and I happen to think that that person should be on a board or commission and no one else does, then I can be voted on council for that decision by people who disagree with me. That's just.
The back appointments are last, you know, they don't have a choice on those appointments. So if they don't agree with your appointment, then your appointment sticks around, and you get out, that's a.
Has an appointment ever been turned down?
Voted against by council, not since I've been here, but I haven't had that many.
Well, you've been around a long, it's.
Not that I know, I mean, it's, you know, it wasn't, I'll be honest, it wasn't until Matt came on board, we were even getting the resumes for the people that we were reporting. From the beginning, I originally just thought that, I asked for them for a long time, I wasn't getting them, until Matt came on board, we were not getting the resumes for the people to choose, they were just kind of going through. As a matter of fact, we ran into a similar problem, was made by executive decision, and it wasn't even a vote by council. So this is something, I think this is a, I think this is a nice fix for people to make it feel comfortable, I mean, our job is to gain trust, and make sure that they believe in us and the decisions we're making, and I think this is one way to do that for now, and if it comes to a point where we need to change it because we're not getting qualified people, then we can do that, it's as easy as a vote, right? And that person can hang, we're only going to be without someone for two meetings before we can change it to get that person on there. This, when you say that the parameters are tight for who has to be on planning commission, I want to clarify this, because on, in the design review board, you have a sentence that's going to be taken out, and it says, and at one, at large, one citizen representative from the community. Are we, is that something we're allowed, is there something that is in the planning commission KRS statute that defines exactly who's going to be on there, or is that just us to find who's going to be on there?
There are no requirements, like they have to have an architect degree or anything like that, but we know that planning commission is a really important, time-consuming board.
Sure.
So that's why I said it's, it's more, it's more challenging to get somebody in there, because you, we can't just have anybody that's off the street, we really try to get people that have some zoning experience, you know.
So the people who are on there, other, I know that Pam has quite the resume for her recent stuff, but I don't know that the rest of them came from that kind of background.
Yeah, I don't know.
Historically, they've looked for folks with property background, folks with a legal background, and I'm trying to go through the.
Not too hard to find those people, though.
No.
A lot of property owners.
Can't sleep a dead cat without that.
A lot of lawyers, too.
And, but like, the only one that I, that I'm aware of that may not have a background in property and planning is maybe Dan, I'm not sure where Dan's background is.
Dan Feller was, if I'm not mistaken, an engineer of some sort. So, you know, I think honestly.
It's nice to have a personal touch, too, up there, too, right, as far as reasonable, and then that's why you have some people as the training, too, right?
So from a staff perspective, these folks in the past, you know, despite the fact that there was not a, not a lot of contention, I guess, with council, they were vetted internally with staff. So it was a staff recommendation from folks, and we certainly looked at those things in the past, their qualifications, and tried to put the right person in there. Obviously, some boards require more qualifications than others, obviously, design review board, you want some people with architectural design, or some element of that type of a background. From planning commission, you want somebody like an attorney or a planning, we have a planner on there, we have somebody that was from another city that was on a, on a similar board, you know, all those elements that are beneficial. So once again, they have been vetted in the past, just for reassurance, it wasn't just randomly picked, and they were.
No, I believe that, and it was, I was just confused because I didn't realize that we got the vote, and, you know, there's nothing wrong with trust in the administration, but you know, it is nice to know who were, exactly who were appointed, as I did last time, so but I, you know, we've gone over this a couple times, I mean, I'm pretty confident that the majority of people want resident, you know, on there for all the boards, the recent people, I mean, I, you have a very valid point there, very well spoken.
And I just want to be careful that you understand what I mean, and it's not that I'm, it's not that I want non-residents on there, I don't think we have a lot of non-residents, or historically, I've had a lot of non-residents, all I want, I'd like residents to be on all the boards and commissions, frankly, obviously, I really would, and I've told that to people I've talked to in town. I just don't want to box the city in where there are examples of people who don't live here, but own businesses, and frankly, put in more of their money and more of their time to the city than all of us do, and they can be, you know, if they fit the requirements, what we're looking for, qualifications for one of these positions, I don't want to, and particularly if we need them, or need somebody like them, I don't want the city to be in a spot where we say, well, they can't even apply to be considered because they're not a resident. At the end of the day, it comes before council, and for approval or denial, so I just think that's, I like that setup.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, I do think that we are a residential city and not necessarily a business driven city, so it's very hard for me to say that some people that own businesses are so pro-business that they would be looking at their best interests versus the cities do, when it comes to density and things of that nature, because that would be helpful for most businesses in town, so that kind of makes me a little nervous on that aspect, and we'd hope you would choose someone that doesn't have that, but it's hard not to have an ulterior motive when it lies in your pockets.
I mean, I, maybe I'm not that cynical, I guess, I just think of some people in town, like right off the top of my head, who are, we all know, who, they just contribute so much to town, and to, they're not, not that they're even running for a board position, but, you know, they're members of the Fort Thomas Business Association, they're very active members, and to say that they can't contribute to society, to our community as a, as a person on a board, I think is silly, if, if we needed them, is what I mean, and, you know, if the mayor and the city wanted to nominate somebody like that, it would come up to us, and we'd have this discussion as a whole council, and we'd say, well, hey, you know, Joe Smith, here's his attributes, here's his qualifications, he doesn't happen to live in Fort Thomas, how do we all feel about that, and evaluate it at that point, but that's just how, that's just how I feel, I'm very much in favor of having residents on all of these things, trust me, I just get nervous when we start to create language that can put us in a corner, I've said that, I've said that before about Grover Grant and other things, that's.
I get nervous when we open up the borders, writing which, that comes out.
That's what's happening.
Yeah, I know.
Because it's, as it is right now, is residence.
Okay. Let's, let me, I'm going to read the definition I came up with real quick during the discussion, just to, I think, I don't, we don't like to get into as depth as the school, because I know they have other reasons to do that, but the definition of resident is a citizen who lives, rent, or, sorry, a citizen who owns, rents, or leases a residential property, and physically lives and sleeps within the city limits. Okay. The paragraph C I added, and all it was is just to clarify by KRS. The paragraph C I added and all it was is just to clarify by KRS that the planning commission does have a chairman, vice chairman and a secretary that is elected annually. So I, I added that in there. It wasn't necessary, but it's just easier when we're looking through the ordinance of what we have to follow. And then I, of course, referenced that KRS that came out of. We also had statutory reference down there and ahead of members. I changed that because the title's different now at KRS and it makes more sense to explain the appointing authority. And that appointing authority just explains that the mayor appoints and the legislative body approves. And then that's all the changes to the rest of that.
What was on that part? I'm sorry.
The second page at the top, statutory reference, I just changed it to be the correct title for that KRS that talks about appointing authority.
I had one more question. Do, do these appointments of all of these commissions and boards, are they vetted through the ethics board?
No.
No? But like, I think I was for city council.
You have to fill out the financial disclosure through the ad district, but they, they're not vetted.
Okay.
And that's not required of, of board members or commission members?
So should we, should we, don't you think our board members should be done the same way council is?
What do you mean by vetted? I mean, literally what the, the board does is looks at your-
Financial disclosure.
Gets it to the ad district.
Oh, okay. Well, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, it says that, you know, the, that the following, thirty-six to thirty-five says the following officers of the city shall file an annual statement of financial interest with the board of ethics. That's elected officials, city administrative officers and candidates. And it doesn't say anything about boards or committees.
Correct.
So don't, I would feel more comfortable that if the people that we're putting on these boards had to follow the same guidelines we did. Now, if you get down to the last two applicants, it would be nice if they just had to fill out their stuff. Because I remember I emailed you recently about, you know, a previous board member and we didn't have any information on him. You know, all we have is a two paragraph statement on who he is. I do believe that, I think we should have one more set before it comes to us and we should, they should be under the same stipulations we are when it comes to how ethically we are supposed to be. So why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we question-
I wouldn't say that filling out the disclosure has anything to do with ethics, that by looking at their document is not going to tell you if they're ethical.
Well, this says to do some board ethics, right?
Correct.
So either way.
I mean, I don't mind if, I mean, if you want to add in that they have to fill out the financial disclosure, that's, that's fine. But I don't want there to be any insinuation that just because they fill it out, they're ethical people or it's even accurate.
They're also not spending-
I'm not, I'm not, I apologize if I came across that way.
No, that's okay.
I just would like the financial disclosure for the amount of investment they are in town to make sure that I believe that, how vested they are in the community, you know what I mean? So if their decisions will affect, you know, what is going on.
What, what, I'm, I'm not sure that's what the financial disclosure shows, though. What, I mean-
All it does is shows you have property you own within the city.
Yeah.
Essentially, it's all in, all of it's.
So I think it helps us and I think it would help the administration understand if there's making a decision that we don't understand where they are, if they're making something that is in their best interest and not the city's best interest, like that we should be, we should know exactly who we're hiring. Right?
I certainly, yeah, I think so, but to me, that seems like an awful lot of red tape for somebody who has an appointed position. And I know where you're getting with this because we're, we've got one person in mind when you're talking about all this, but, but I'm not sure that you subject every member of every commission to a financial disclosure because of your feelings about one instance that's a hot button instance in town right now.
Well, that's the whole point, right? Is we don't sometimes see what rises to the top of the pond until it's off in there, right? And so you don't see all that stuff. Things are rising to the top now where credit loses trust in the, in the community. And I think that any step that we can take to ensure that we are doing the right and correct thing will just help them make sure that they understand what makes the decisions that they want, if they're vested in us.
Yeah, I mean, you can recommend what you want, Adam. I disagree with it. I just think that, I really do. Like I said before, I just, I'm not a big fan of all the red tape. And I think that all we're talking about here, we're getting so into the week, we're talking about a, a nomination by the administration, the executive branch that is approved by council. And so ultimately, you, you get, you get to decide anyway. You get to either approve or deny. And I just think that we're going to start, I mean, you're going to start requiring financial disclosures of everybody. Why is anybody going to want to volunteer their time? That's what they're doing. They're not even elected, they're not paid.
They're not paid either.
Well, we actually are, we're just not paid much. But I just don't, I'm not a fan of all that red tape. And we're talking about city government here and I don't think we've had a huge issue historically. In fact, we've had no issue historically, other than what's come to light after One Highland. And, and I've talked to people in town about that too. But I, I, I'm not a big believer in, in making this some huge obstacle course for people who are willing to volunteer their time to have to go through.
I don't think that just, you know, you're not giving, they're not turning in their tax returns and they're not giving a personal financial statement. All they're doing is explaining and letting everybody know what their interest in the city is. I really don't have a problem with that.
I agree with Andy when he states it, you know, I might not be the most eligible with my words, Andy's better. I mean, we're not asking for their, you know, W2s. We're just saying if you own property in the city, where do you own, you know, where do you own that property and why, basically?
Yeah, I actually didn't mind doing that at all when you guys gave me the form. It took maybe five minutes to fill out. It just-
It didn't matter if you minded, you had to do it.
Which, which, you win.
I don't, I don't put anybody getting on one of these boards on here.
Right. So if that's, if that's what we're going to do, it would be a change to the ethics ordinance as opposed to-
It's just adding that one line to the committee's board.
It would just add that board members because it's a whole lot easier than adding it to every single board and hope you don't miss one, that the ethics ordinance would be added. So that would be something that we can, that you can bring up to add, I mean, it's a simple line to add that.
So for, so we don't need to do that now?
No, we just, you can bring that up at the council meeting and then that'll direct staff to, to put up a first reading for an ethics.
For this, for the review of the ordinance pertaining to the planning commission, I would like to make a, or I would make a motion to recommend that your, your changes in adding C be approved, be approved, your changing-
We start from the top to help?
Do you want to start from the top?
Yeah, that way.
That we add-
Don't forget something.
That we add a definition of resident. And that we include-
That would be before that.
That we have to be a resident of the city.
Yes. And by the definition I just explained, a citizen who owns, rents-
Yes.
-or leases a residential property and physically lives and sleeps within the city limits. And then what I would do is in A, where I've added citizen member, I would say seven resident members. And I purposely put the term resident or citizen in the definition of resident, which will reflect KRS. So they, they have to own, they have to sleep in the city, but they can't be elected, they can't be appointed and they can't be an employee.
We'll remove the reference to KRS.
Correct. Thank you. So what we'll do is we'll change citizen to resident and remove the, the KRS reference since we've not, we're not following that.
We're just typing it, so please.
And to approve your change in paragraph B. And to approve your addition of paragraph C. And approve your statutory reference change.
Okay.
Now, one other thing is I, I saw this on here on the design review board. There's two things that I want to talk about for all of these, so that's why I'm kind of referencing this one, so in case we want to do overlapping all in the same way. And this one, it's, it's outlined, but it's, it's lined out, but I kind of like it. Any board member, any member of the board removed from office by the mayor may appeal to removal to the board of council within 30 days. That's another checks and balances system that I kind of like because we're the ones who elect them, the mayor appoints them, then we, we hire them, and then the mayor can fire them without our consent. That doesn't make any sense. It gives the mayor autonomy, right? Especially with checks and balances system. If we went through this whole thing and we believe that we are the ones who made that decision, I think that would be nice to have in all these ordinances that, you know, I am hard to believe that we would ever disagree in that situation, but to take it out of there just gives the mayor Mason, a Macy Caesar. You know, so where are you referencing, I'm sorry? So this is on the design review board here. If you look in the-
First page?
The first page and the bottom, last line removed. I just kind of like the checks and balances system. I think it keeps things more above par, even if it's just words. I think that would be a nice thing to have in all these. And I, there is one thing I really liked that you added. I think it was in the design review board. And I think this is a, I actually think this is a great thing. I thought it was the design review board, that everything shall, if anything doesn't, they can, they appeal to the city council prior to, if you want to finish this first before we go on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry.
Yeah, knock down the PC. Go ahead, knock down the PC.
So you're, but he's mine to add.
But I, I think all the things I think are good for all the boards.
He's just checking to see if that's legal.
That's what I was curious about. While he's looking at if that, that's legal or not, the other thing I wanted to mention is, is it legal for any of the boards, for their appeal to go to city council prior to going to circuit court? Now, they can automatically go to circuit court if they want to skip the appeal process and go to council. But I do like the thought of it coming back to us first prior to going to circuit so that maybe they can come to an understanding first. I think that's a-
Well, that's been added to the design review board.
That's been added to the design review board, but it's not on the other boards.
Because we're, we're entitled to do whatever we want in the DRV. And so that, that was-
The DRV is a board that Four Times created, so we can do whatever we want on that board. That's why we made that change. I don't know, that's going to be, that's going to be a legal question to the city because-
Yeah, that's why I was, that's why I'm bringing up that question.
It's laying out that and I don't know if you can add to that appeal to a council. So that's a double change.
Generally, our position has been not to do a whole lot to appeal remedy rights that's when something's set out in KRS because bottom line is, I, I know that we're going to be safe there and-
And well, it's sued, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So if we include ourselves, then we have a potential getting sued as before we would not.
Now then, why are we doing it for the design review board? Because design review board's not part of KRS.
So it's, it's going to fall back to us regardless because we create, I mean, if somebody sues because of a decision, they could sue us for creating this board anyway. So we're going to have a lot of difficulty because we made the, we, we added this layer of government over top of that, so we would get sued regardless.
And KRS 100.157 in some paragraph one, the last sentence says, and I'm going to read this entire paragraph again, but the last sentence says, "Members so removed, shall have the right of appeal to the circuit court." And to, to tell them that you've got to go to-
Well, they could skip us, they could skip us.
Not if we have it in our ordinance.
Right.
Well, and why would they have an optional, you know? I don't know why, somebody could choose that.
That's a surprise.
Well, I just mean to give them that.
No, no, I just, I, I liked it. I thought it was a nice way to try to settle things a little more amicably than take it to a court. And I think, I think a lot of people should understand too, they talk about lawsuits, it's not suits, it's appealing. It's a, there's a big difference in those two words. And don't think they're suing the city, they're just appealing the decision that was made to try to get what they want done. And that is a huge difference. I mean, that's suing.
Litigation. Yeah, and I do agree with you. The language in the design review board that we're going to talk about, I think is great. And I think we all agree with that. And, but you understand why you can't do that for the other, for the KRS.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. How about the, it should still, how about coming back to the board of, coming back to the council for review of the mayor deciding to let someone go?
That's, I mean, that's what you guys want, that's-
Can you explain the significance of cross, getting rid of that language?
Just, it's a, I'm trying to shorten some of the language and it's not, it's not in KRS. Just trying to get back more towards KRS.
Removal statute, again, 157 says, "Any member of a planning commission may be removed by the appropriate appointing authority for inefficiency, neglect of duty, malfeasance or conflict of interest. Any appointing authority who exercises power to remove a member of the planning commission shall show some bid and written statement to the commission setting forth the reasons for removal and the statement shall be read at the next meeting of the planning commission, which shall be opened to the general public." Very, very next sentence, "Members so removed, shall I have the right of appeal to the circuit court?" That's the framework that I would say we work with then.
And another reason to take that out about the mayor is that, you know, I mean, from now, I, I like to very clearly specify executive branch decisions, which is myself and the mayor, and legislative, which is councils. And this is by definition, an executive function of appointment. It's just approved by the legislative. So the fact that they want to remove because of some malfeasance to have to get, for it to go to council, I just don't think is appropriate. I think it should go directly to the circuit, let them rule based on the facts that are there. Why add that extra little group in there?
The legislative body, which is, you stated, is different than the executive branch unless somebody has approved it. You're, you're taking us out of the equation.
Not, not for approval, just for removal. Yes, we are making it out because it's not, it's an executive position. It's executive branches. So yes, I am removing the legislative-
That's what the whole point of having both bodies is, the balance, right? So that'll, that gives two to one strength in there. Appointment basically and removal, it gives one to the council. I'm just, just pointing that out, you know what I mean? And then the whole idea is for a balance, right? You know, so that's what I'm, I like the lines. I will defer to the gentleman here on what they agree with here on one person, you know what I mean? So-
I think I'm fine with it, how, how it is. If the circuit, I mean, they have the right to appeal.
Right.
That's all that I would, they have the right to appeal, they have the right to appeal. So do I have a second for the?
The only change is-
Okay, so let me, let me, since we've been talking, let me re-review all of it so I'm clear. We're adding in definitions, definition of a resident, which captures the citizen definition by KRS and the addition we've changed to seven resident members as opposed to citizen members. We've renewed, removed the mayor and the city engineer from paragraph A and B. We've added paragraph C just for clarification that there are positions within the board. We've changed members to appointing authority just to be accurate with KRS. And that's the only changes.
Correct. Okay, did we wanna talk about term limits?
I don't know. I thought about that. I think back to the box more than what...
A lot more.
We can revisit some other time.
Sure. I just said that some people get... Some people are on these boards a very long time, and while I appreciate the work they've done, sometimes it gets a little stale, you know, fresh set of eyes. I'm 47 years old and I had no idea what's going on on this thing. You know what I mean? So sometimes it's nice to have, you know, the fresh eyes in here to do things. I get some people thinking... I worry about some of these boards a lot, because I think they start ruling by opinion and not by law when they're on there for so long. When there's a certain group that had been together so long, it becomes a muddy system. And I'm glad to have you guys here, because you can control that a little bit more. But that's just a little worry of mine.
Yeah, and I do think, broad picture, everyone worries about that. But the function of the... Pardon me. The function of the boards is to act as the board itself. And then they recommend things to council. And so, you know what I mean?
Well, they actually don't... Once they make a recommendation, it doesn't come back to council, except for planning commission and zoning changes. But the rest of the boards in general make the decision, it doesn't come back. So once they have a final sitting.
Well, that's true for design review board, I know.
And board of adjustments. And I know a lot of things about planning commission. The only thing that comes back to us, and I just asked this question, is zoning changes, right?
Zoning changes are math and I'm the same type of...
Yes. But if we broaden their horizon, they make decisions, it doesn't come back to us. But that's why, like, if we... Yeah, so that's the only thing that comes back to us.
Right.
So these guys know the topic.
But I understand, but we're not broadening anything.
But if we do that...
Yeah.
Yeah, it just gives more language.
All right. Andy, you made a motion to recommend what I just explained, those changes.
Is it possible to segment that out? Because I agree with everything, with exception to the resident language for the reasons that I stated earlier. We can just do it all at once if you want.
It would be a...
Okay, okay.
I mean, you said that you would agree with a committee on that if they want residents, and now you're a nay on that? I mean, you actually said, "I'll go with whatever this committee decides to do," and then now you say you're a no on the resident side?
I don't think I said that, did I?
Yeah.
No, what I said was, is when it comes... When they come before council, I am in agreement that they should be a resident. But I don't wanna box us out in the event that we need the opportunity to consider somebody else. At council, I don't wanna put...
I could be wrong, but I saw you said you would agree with that.
Oh, you just clarified.
No, I mean, I'm agreeing on all this stuff.
Yeah, just get a second, and then we'll do a roll call.
Do I have a second?
I have a second. Hi.
Hi.
No.
Okay. It passes from the committee.
Do you realize you're gonna be a no about them all these if we want residents, right?
Well, I mean, we can discuss it, Adam. I think I've made it pretty clear. The reason...
I'm just saying, we agree that we have agreed that we want residents on all these, so every...
Right, but I think that that requirement, for all the reasons, is... I think it's silly, and that's so...
I guess it'll just be a nay on all of it. It'll be two to one. You know, it's fine with that, though, but if this goes to council, this doesn't change, because it's a tie vote saying council, it's gonna stay residents.
So that's what I've said.
Okay. It just stays like it is. There's no change.
Yeah.
Okay. Board of adjustments.
We're gonna get you one more.
So...
You're gonna hit me with it? Ben May.
Looking on to the review of ordinance, chapter 36 pertaining to the board of adjustments.
Okay.
Not a whole lot of...
Yeah, the only changes on here is it doesn't lay out reimbursement. It actually gives the option for being paid. So I just removed that and made it like the other ones, where the members of the board of adjustments shall serve without compensation. The rest of it is based on KRS, and it's accurate as it's written.
You know, this said... Back to the planning commission. And I just... Reveal expenses, do we define that somewhere?
No.
No, it's just whatever you feel.
But it's gotta be approved by council, so I left it in there. Because you never... The reason is, is I can't think of anything, but I don't wanna exclude it in case we need it in the future.
Stat storyline, which...
For the same reasons as we just discussed, I don't think we need to go into it in that detail, but it's the same topic of the planning commission. I'd like to make... Or I will make a motion to recommend that we add seven resident members. Same definition that we used in planning and zoning. And also add the definition of resident. And to approve your change in paragraph G.
I have one thing I'd like to bring up on this, so it's pretty simple. Says we have seven members here of the board of adjustments. Now, I can understand seven on a planning commission. You know, the board of adjustments didn't meet in December or January for lack of things to do, per se, right? Is that correct?
It's pretty rare, honestly. Board of adjustment is pretty busy.
Two months in a row it didn't meet. According... And the website says because there was lack of things. But they're pretty busy, not meeting for two months. And so... And if we're talking about having trouble getting residents to be on these boards, and it doesn't seem to me like everybody shows up to some of these boards sometimes, so would it be easier to get five members instead of seven? And to reduce that number by two? These people play off their term, but that... Do you think that seven is too many? I mean, I think for the board of adjustments, I'm not... I can understand planning commission, because the broad scope of the things they have to discuss, right? And you need as many eyes on that as possible. But it seems to me that board of adjustments, with your recommendation, would probably follow up most of the time. If you have five...
I'll let Kevin answer. My thought is, if you don't always get seven there, if you get five, maybe only get three, now we've got even fewer people making that type of decision. So, you know, that would be my response, but Kevin...
I mean, I see your point about the, you know, getting more people. I will say that it's nice to have... On some level, it's nice to have that, especially during vacation season. You get into June, July, August, and, you know, there's a lot of people that take vacations and things of that nature. I'll say that, obviously, we haven't met for two months, but if you look at traditionally the board of adjustment, they're probably the busiest of the boards as far as actual decisions. I had my annual report, and we probably had thirty to forty cases, you know? And it's a pretty busy board. And I think for all of our boards, it is kind of a balance of, you know, do you have less people or more that can kind of balance that out? It's... There's no black and white on it. Traditionally, I think the board of adjustment's always had seven. And I think that that's just kind of where we've been.
So what do you think?
I mean, honestly, I like the seven.
This is your board.
Well, I think the board of adjustment, I'll say, is... It's easier to find people for board adjustment. In general, there's less qualifications that you have to have for board adjustment. You just need somebody with good common sense. We have plenty of good common sense people for board adjustment. You know, the others, planning commission and design review, you need special... I think you need special characteristics, special professions for those. Board of adjustment, you just need good common sense people. It's easier to get it.
I was, you know, and I didn't bring this up in the last one. I noticed we've had quite a few people miss some of these meetings because of vacations and stuff like that. And the idea of electing these people is they show up to these board meetings. Would you guys ever consider if they miss more than three meetings a year, four meetings a year, that we start reviewing to see if they wanna be on these boards, or if we should start looking for our applicants? Because I think absentee is huge for these things.
You may get an answer you don't like, though. And I'm serious. My concern is that... Let's back up for a minute on the board of adjustments. A lot of these decisions are folks wanting to put on a small addition, make a change, and it's time sensitive. And if all of a sudden we have five members or three, and we can't get enough folks, people's projects are put back. And having been on planning commission years ago, I can tell you, it's a labor.
Yeah, sure.
And...
You do volunteer for that, though, so there should be certain guidelines for that.
But my thought is, and I'm probably giving you more than I...
No, I wanna hear this, because you were on this, so I just hate that so many people miss these things, and there's no accountability. So there are other people in waiting. Why wouldn't we have those people on there that wanna be there?
And if I thought we had a true queue of people, and maybe we do, but then I hear what you're saying. But I... And I think if it gets bad enough, Kevin's kind of the guy with his finger on the thumb on the pulse of that situation.
Not just this, but all boards in general, not in that particular one.
I would be concerned that if the number was three, then all of a sudden, for whatever reason, somebody misses three, and you go to them, and the first thing they think is, "Oh, hey, bye. I'm outta here." And so that would be my concern, having been on planning commission.
Yeah, I definitely don't wanna tighten rings off too much, but I think at a certain point, though, like, hey, definitely some people need to be held accountable when they don't, when they miss. There are some people that haven't been serving boards for a year.
And I think that's on Kevin to let me know, for us to be... We can always remove somebody for inefficiency.
Absolutely. I mean, I think we could go back and kind of do the research on that. Honestly, we have had a couple folks that have some stints, you know, like that. But I think overall, I'd say that it's not a problem. I know that, you know, obviously, I'll tell you right now, we have a couple work conflicts that, you know, a person or two has missed just because of, you know, their obligations at work. So it is one of those, you have a professional that is in that field, that you need that profession, and they have obligations at work. So I mean, we can do some a little bit...
No, I know there's conflicts. I'm not saying I miss one, or I don't say like four.
Well, it says here in the KRS that they can be removed for inefficiency, neglect of duty. I mean, those two things cover that.
I just wanna make you aware that I just wanna make sure that these boards appreciate the responsibility. Because when they're not there, their vote changes the whole outcome of that meeting, right? And it's a big deal. It goes on a tie to win. So it's very important that they show up, you know what I mean? And these are decisions that we have no control over. So that's what I'm saying. Their role is very important, and they take on that responsibility. They should be...
I agree. And as a city, you certainly can't legislate good behavior out of everybody. So that's what we need to try to...
Try to be elected, so...
Okay.
Yeah, we had a motion...
So I'll review real quick, if you don't mind. Add definitions, add resident, seven resident members. The board residents added there. I added, "The members of the board of adjustments shall serve without compensation." And those are the only changes. Okay.
Second one. Do you roll call him? Hi.
Hi.
No.
Our last item, review of ordinance, chapter 36 pertaining to the board of design.
Okay, this one's a little lengthier, like I explained. We created this board, so we can do more changes. The title is Board of Design Review. However, even in the ordinance, it only refers it as the design review board, so I recommend that we just change it to design review board that everybody comes with. So that's what the first change is. Definitions, we added member, which I won't get into, because I'm assuming this one's gonna be like the other one, so I'll be wasting my breath on that. And then the current definition of members, the established members, is extremely long and difficult. And it categorizes different skill sets for a different number of members, which is an administrative nightmare to try to track that. So I would ask that we make it essentially all of those requirements just as a broad scope of everybody. Because I don't see... I have no idea if this is even followed right now to where two have to have this, two have to have this. It's just very complicated. So I would ask that we just eliminate that paragraph and add here, and I'll just read what we have. There is hereby establish a form. This is just... The first sentence is just forming the DRV. The board shall consist of five members appointed by the mayor and approved by the board of council. All members shall have demonstrated interest or experience in architecture, design, real estate, historic preservation, or a similar profession, or own a business, own operated business within the district regulated by the DRV. Now, that was in the current ordinance as well, that it could be a business owner.
I would really like when it said that one large citizen member is owned from a community. Do we get rid of similar profession and add that? I think that's important.
So what's your definition of one at large?
Just one at large.
So it doesn't have to be...
Resident, just a resident.
So it doesn't have to have any skill set or any knowledge in anything?
Well, I mean, that's up to you. That would be... That would just leave it more broad for you guys to have a choice of who comes in. You don't have to bring them to our attention, but it gives you more flexibility if you feel that someone has, I mean, someone has the knowledge and capability to learn. You know what I mean? That opens it up for you, it doesn't keep it as tight.
I would also add, in professions, restoration and construction. Somebody that does restoration and construction can see whether it's feasible to require somebody to...
I mean, ultimately, it's you guys who bring the appointment to us, right? So regardless of what this says, you don't have to choose someone from that category.
We do, because it's in here. It has to demonstrate interest or experience, so it may not that that's their profession, but if they're somebody that's a historian, or they have just interest in...
No, but broadening doesn't limit you, you know what I mean? Broadening, it only helps you find people.
Kevin, do you see any...
I don't understand why you wanna broaden this one, but you wanna tighten all the others.
I'm broadening the person that we can hire, as far as like their education background.
That was my entire point regarding the resident, non-resident situation.
This, well, that's why I'm trying to make... We have 17,000 people to choose from. Not a very good argument, man. You're saying the whole world. I'm saying 17,000 people that have a vested interest in us.
Okay.
I just think that's... I'm just saying that you guys say you have trouble picking. What does it matter if that's in there? It's fine if you wanna keep the way it is up here.
And I'll see if that value added to that, because I would have to explain to council why I'm picking somebody. Unless you, Kevin, do you see anybody?
I mean, I think we had it kind of covered there, similar, similar profession. I don't know... I don't really see a benefit to it. I think we want somebody, in that particular board, I think we want somebody that has the professional qualifications. Board of adjustment is probably the one that you just want a good common sense person. I think planning commission and design review board, you want that skill set.
Yeah. I mean, when the staff discussed this, we think there is value in having somebody that not necessarily is a resident, but owns property or runs a business in that district, because they have a... They're one... The ones that we recommend would be community members, and they have a vested interest in what that district... Because this is only covering the CBD district, that they have a vested interest in what that district does. So that would be the at-large citizen that may not have all that background, but they do have a prominent business there, that they have a vested interest in what the board does.
How will you, on hand, describe how you feel about this happening?
And are you saying that in that instance, that that would have to... You're recommending that as a resident no matter what, or would be... Could be the business owner?
It would just be, yeah. The way we wrote and recommended, it was not necessarily had to be a resident. They would just have to own or operate a business within the district. And obviously, that could mean that the mayor could recommend somebody that just opened a business last month. However, in reality, it would be us recommending somebody who has a established business here, somebody who has already, because their business moved here, has already changed. Because we, without naming names, we know certain businesses that came to town that have changed that area because they started that, and that they're prominent in that area where they work with the other business owners to try to improve that area and have been very successful. Those are the people that we would say would make sense to be on this board, that they have that experience of being there, living, essentially living there in that district.
Well, I want to say one more thing here, and I'll be done, okay? And this is mostly for you, Adam, because, first of all, if you misunderstood me when I said I would agree with the decision of the committee, I apologize. What I meant was, if the committee recommends a certain way, that's the committee's recommendation. I don't necessarily have to agree with it. My entire holdup with this entire thing, and this is the last time I'll say it, is around this exact instance. And it's because if we're going to pretend, and I'm not... I completely value it. I guarantee you it. I feel the same way about residents as both of you do, at 100%. I would prefer them in every single instance over non-residents. But this is a prime example here, particularly in a business district, whether it's CBD or Midway or otherwise. If we're gonna pretend as a city that we're willing to partner with businesses and support businesses, and we get what we do, we take great strides to do both of those things, I do not understand the logic behind having somebody, as Matt said, a business owner in a district who has been vital in the vitality of that district. And it could be, you know, a total change of that district in a good way. A facelift of the district, brought other businesses along, kind of a rising tide raises all votes. And you can look at the... I'm using a specific example, the Midway district is that. I just think that if we're gonna partner with these businesses, to preclude somebody who has vested so much of their money and time and blood and sweat and tears just because they live outside of their limits is silly. That being said, that is just for the mayor's appointment. It can come before council, and if it's a business owner who I personally don't think is best enough in town, I will note every single time on that person at council. But if it is somebody in an instance where they bring an added value and really needs them, then I'm gonna go guess whether they're a resident or not. But this just brings up that point. And I only wanna illustrate it one more time, because I feel bad that I'm not... I agree with all these changes that we've made. It's the simple resident language that I'm held up on, because I think it hamstrings. And that's it. And that's all I'm gonna say about it. But I appreciate the conversation.
I'm for residents, though.
Andy, on this ordinance, are you the same? You want a resident, no property owner, no... Okay.
They can be a property owner, but they also have to be...
They also have to resign, okay. And then, so what I'll do is remove the own operated business within the district. And are you okay with the all members shall have demonstrated interest or experience in architecture, design, real estate, addition of restoration, construction, historic preservation, and/or similar profession?
I think that's great, yeah.
That's fine, okay.
It also says in here, in the event the mayor fails to fill a vacancy for board within 60 days.
Hang on, let me get through this real quick. The board shall consist of five resident members. Okay. All right, so that's what at least two of you want on that. All right. The next thing we get to here is terms of office. Each member shall serve until appointment. Qualification of his or her successor.
You took out the qualifications of his or her. I don't like that. Take that out. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, that's... You shouldn't be beholden to the previous person's qualifications.
Yes, that's what it was. Okay, now I'm trying to think, why did I do that? Yeah, that's because of before, I had to have two had disqualification, two had disquali... So it was just too confusing. Okay, thank you for that. Vacancies, in the event the mayor fails to fill a vacancy. This one had it in there where the planning commission does it. I think we take that out. This is... There's no reason we can't fill it within 60 days. And for planning commission to have full control, that means the planning commission can do it without approval from council or the mayor. I just don't think we need to do that. It's our board. And then any member removed that the mayor, that can appeal to council. So we took that out.
I don't like that, but I'll go with whatever the committee says on that. I just, you know, I'll refer back to what Tim said about the statute. That doesn't refer to this one. That refers to planning commission, correct?
Correct. And this is just, again, this is our board.
Then somebody could go to the circuit court. Then they, then they do have the right to appeal.
Okay, so they do have the same rights.
And then paragraph C, organization, we took out the Secretary of President's, because that's not how we function. And then I put here the exact time and date, meaning determined by the board, I removed that and put by ordinance unless a special meeting is called, because it is defined in the ordinance, and the board can't just make it up, we have to have a special meeting. So that just cleans it up to make it more staff administrative as opposed to the board having that control. And then the next one is the review process. Thirty-six point zero one four.
What, just to back up one second.
Sure.
In the definitions of landmark, have all landmark properties been identified, or can?
Great, it's a great question, it's on my list for the interns to complete, so I don't have an answer.
Actually, I knew.
Because we don't, yeah, because that was one of my questions, we have, we have multiple around the city, I don't know if we have a list, and I don't know if they've all been approved, but they need to be. So that's part of what we're doing. Did you want to?
No.
My gut, my gut is no, or we've lost the paperwork about it.
And my point in asking is, if somebody has bought the building, and now they're all of a sudden going to be called a landmark, and they're held to different rules than when they bought the building, you know, they have a little bit of an issue with that. But, you know, maybe all the landmark buildings should be identified.
Yeah, we need to identify them, and the way I'm identifying them, they have a big plaque, I mean, there's a house up on the north end on the avenue that, it's a hidden plaque, that's got the large plaque in front of their house. So one, I need to, I need to identify where they're all are. But, but yeah, I guess, are you saying it's because the Design Review Board can make anything a landmark without their approval?
Correct, correct.
Okay, that's the concern, which I agree.
I think it is important that we get those designated, there are more and more creative arguments about taking, you know, and, and I can see somebody making that type of argument if suddenly they can't.
It looks, sorry.
No.
It looks on here that, that's the definition, but they recommended the Board of Counsel and Planning Commission for landmarks, so I think that we do have that, that's a good point.
That's why, that's why I really love this ad, the fact that you sent your summons back to Board of Counsel for approval, because let it fall on our shoulders.
Yes.
For these decisions, because we are the ones that were elected, and I just think they hit.
And that's kind of been our position on this since we've got control of it, have it go back to council and have them review it?
Just, just cursory look here, it looks like that's how it is, but I will double check to make sure that that's clearly stated in here, that if, if the DRV wants to make a property that's not currently a landmark, a landmark, that council has to approve that. Is that, is that, okay, I'll double check that, just to be sure, and if it's not, then I'll, I'll reach out and we'll add it in there. Is everybody in agreeance to that? That if that isn't the case, that we, council does need to approve that before we change, and the owner has, should have a say, at least be able to speak about it, okay?
It's great, great calling me.
Okay, any other?
Just one, one clarification. What is the, just because it's, I see it in different places, what is the difference between city administration and city staff?
Nothing, most likely.
Nothing, same.
Probably.
We, so in this, Kevin, this is the one where we changed from building inspector to, a lot in here was building inspector, and we changed it to staff because it's really not necessarily just a building inspector, it's Kevin, the building inspector, or Sherry, or me, so we just try to make it more general, it's somebody from the staff, because it's just more accurate operationally. Okay, before that section I had come to next, were there any other comments along the way I should have asked that, since it's such a big?
I think that was all, there's nothing underlying in that.
Thirty-six point zero one four is the review process. So the DRV will do a certificate appropriateness for, for new construction addition, the alteration exterior, structure, and demolition. We've added B in there because these are a little less impactful, and we believe that the staff can most likely take care of these instead of having them go to the board, which would include landscaping, signage, lighting, and public street, streetscapes. So how we describe that is administrative staff may approve or disapprove or request minor in nature for the following appendix, so for everything appendix two and those four, with the emphasis on minor in nature. So if it's something smaller that they deem as minor, the staff will approve. If it's something that Kevin gets, and whether it's minor, but he understands that that impacts the larger good, he'll probably send it to, so we still get some option to send it to DRV, but for those minor little things, instead of making them, a business come through the process of a two-month ordeal when it's replacing a tree, or adding a new light fixture that, if Kevin can look at it and say, yep, that makes sense, let's just do it administratively. So we added in specifically the minor in nature, just to kind of cover that. And then if he would do that at the next meeting, he would, just like I do with executive orders at council, I'll show council, hey, we did this executive order for this, he'll be doing the same, he'll say, hey, I approved this, this last month, because it was minor in nature, just, so at least the board understands, and at that point, they can say, look, Kevin, we don't agree with you, that we think that's a little minor or major, next time, bring it to us. Does that make sense?
I, I don't mind most of these, except signage. That's the only one I have concerns with, simply because of a lot of these signs that are popping up around town for these apartment complexes. I just think it takes away from the character of our town. Now, I don't mind signs we have on the building for identification, I think we talked about this briefly. How could we control that? Is it something we do here, is it something to be created?
Kevin has the same concerns, so.
Yeah, like, I wouldn't mind signs on the actual buildings, nice metal plaque.
It would be like a replacement sign that's already there would be one of his.
Yes.
As opposed to a new sign.
So a couple different pieces there, the apartment complexes, none of the ones that the signs you're talking about aren't regulated by DRV, they're outside of the central business districts. So that's something that would be discussed in ordinance form, in the actual, we're going through those, we haven't got to the sign ordinance yet, but that's something that, if we want to tweak that language, that's the place to do it. In this particular, as part of the rationale for doing this, was that the intention is in the new zoning ordinance to expand the Design Review Board's obligations to our other commercial districts. The idea is that currently in our other business districts, any building isn't regulated. So if somebody wanted to put in a Dollar General, it could be a steel building with no landscaping and nothing that we couldn't regulate, you know, it could be limited, let's put it that way. Our planning commissioner, you know, would certainly do a development plan, but there would be limited design standards that they would be subject to. So the idea is that we would expand some of those elements for the Design Review Board, and I wanted to take off some of these things that are minor in nature. Currently, the design guidelines actually give the administrative staff a lot of flexibility, a lot more than we use. In my tenure then, since I've been here, it hasn't been an overburden of applications that come in, so I take most everything to the Design Review Board. It's just when we're going to be expanding their obligations to the other commercial districts and a select few residential applications, I wanted to take some of these things off of their plate because, you know, I'm, I'm not going to stick my neck out there, that's for damn sure. I'm going to, if I'm going to take it to the Design Review Board, there's any question whatsoever. But as Matt said, you got something very minor, you know, I'll go ahead and, I, I think it would just streamline the process for somebody waiting a month or two for, you know, like you said, a light fixture or a tree, or something like that, that is just, just minor in nature. But that's the rationale, because we are partially expanding their obligations, but those signs, that's going to be in the.
So we are working on that, we're just.
Well, you know, it's part of the sign discussion, I, I, we haven't, we've talked about it, but we haven't got there yet, I'll be honest, we haven't really got there. It is part of something that we have discussed with Alisa to, to at least discuss.
See, these are, these are some ways.
Can I stop real quick?
Sure.
I apologize, can you give your keys to Chris? And if there's a white Acura in the back parking lot, it needs to move.
Okay.
That's why I'm parking.
Okay, can, you mind if he moves it?
No, not at all.
Or? Sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
If not, they're going to put a Connex on top of it. Thank you.
Sorry. That's one of my concerns when we, when we say resident and business owner, perspective of business owner has, when you open up a primary business owner's perspective on what is needed for their success, or the residents here are really what drives our, our city, and so that's my real main concern, is that they will be too focused on success on their end, and it would lean even if fifty-one, forty-nine. So opening parameters just, it's scary to me, and I like to trust you guys, and I think that's plausible, what do you guys think?
I'm fine with it. That's written here.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably true.
Yeah. I mean, there are things we need to untie, you know what I mean, and things I feel we should tighten.
Once again, I'm not, I'm not going to stick my neck out there, if there's any question whatsoever, it's.
Yeah, no, but we get like, well, you hear it more than we do, probably.
Nope, one thing.
I'm going to send it to you. On the board on my phone, he caught mine.
That's why, that's why I'm there.
Thirty-six point zero one one, what is the, what is the reason for not making the minutes public?
I don't think it's making it public, I thought it said, like, challenge or something, isn't it?
Make them public.
Where's? Sorry, my computer's down here.
I, I misread that. Yeah, aren't all the minutes public from all the words?
Where are you at, my computer?
The second page, second page, first paragraph.
It would still be available for public inspection, all minutes are by KRS, it's just the fact that the secretary does not prepare the minutes, it's Kevin. So we just wanted to make it more, more how it is operationally.
I misread that, somebody said.
But you're right, it did, in the, in the, in there, it does say about public inspection, but all of them are.
Oh, okay, that's all straight stuff. So I'll make a motion.
Hold on, we still got a couple more.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
There's one more.
Actually.
Three more.
Sorry, I got.
Well, are they talking about just building inspector to administrative staff?
Yeah.
And then J and K.
Okay, yeah, so the building inspector has been changed a few times there to administrative staff, just again, to be more accurate operationally. And then, of course, all the things, then Board of Counsel. We, we made the appeal to Board of Counsel first, before Court of Competent Jurisdiction. Did I miss anything?
No.
Okay, sorry.
One paragraph, I don't like.
We're concerned about the term competent, but we left it in there. No, that's that.
I saw, I wasn't speaking.
Okay, so those.
The only thing I ever.
Those are.
I'm going to use that.
Okay, so. Let's see if there's any other.
Since this is, this is a long one, do you want to just review?
That's what I'm trying to do here, I'm, I'm trying, if you don't mind, let me try to get my computer back up here, and it doesn't look like I'm going to be able to. Since I don't have it in front of me, let me, correct me if I'm wrong here, so we've added definitions that it's a resident member, same as the last board, we have added in between five members, we've added the word resident, we have removed or, or own operated business within the district, and we have added, I believe, construction and. Restoration, right, Andy?
Yeah.
On that first paragraph. And I think, other than that, we have, I'm going to check on, I'm going to check on to make sure that landmark properties have to be approved by council, and the property owners have a right to have a say. Right, and then, other than those changes, everything else is as staff recommended, is that correct?
Do we, who's, who determines whether they're a landmark or not?
DRV.
DRV.
Yeah.
So.
It's what it looks like.
Is someone going to go out from the staff scammer and say, I think we should be visiting these sites, and then they go to the D I P, what else could be?
Well, well, yeah, we'll, we'll track the history on them, I'm sure they have gone either the DRV, or maybe even before the DRV was created, it's probably a state thing, so I'll.
That is not a small project, right?
It's not, it's not something I'll get done in a couple of months, it might take a couple of years, actually, so.
It's great.
I think it's important for us to track all those in the city, so.
So much conversation about historical preservation, I think that's a great thing.
Right, yeah. Okay, so did I miss anything else? So staff, everything the staff recommended, other than the member part, and then they added the two tasks, okay?
I'll make a motion to recommend to council.
Second. Approval along with the suggestions or the corrections of Matt just read.
Resident was one of them, right? Is that what you wanted, guys?
And where did I have to discuss this prior to council, because I haven't agreed with all this stuff, it's just that tightening that one word is really the thorn in my side.
No, I get it, I'll have that, all right, I'm glad you're there.
And I think, so what we'll do for, just, Andy, for your knowledge, when you report this at the council meeting next week, is that's one part that we probably need to just make sure, because there's no point in us taking the next two months to go through second reading to strike it, let's just see, we can, we can do a straw poll to see if we need to change it for first reading, because I would, I mean, unless you don't think that's a substantive change on the second reading, I think it probably is. So for the second readings, you can make changes to vote on the final one, but it can't be substantive, large, and I think that would be a large change to make it to last second, without having, without having the public have two readings of it, if that makes sense.
Your motion by Andy?
Yeah.
Mr. LaForte.
Hi.
Mr. Henry.
Man.
All right.
Is that it?
Call the meeting.
Call the meeting, do your.
You forgot to do.
Explain that.
But, the second reading.
So first reading, we really don't have discussion on.
So, 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 I'm going to recommend that council makes this one, obviously, everything needs discussed.
So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to have, I'll write these up as the committee has recommended, so that'll be on the agenda. So at that point, when you guys bring it up, if, that would be one thing I would just say, just to save us time, just to bring up that aspect, and to make sure that you've got to be those people that are in brand that that's it, or three, that what the mayor could just.
You can claim the resident.
If you just, there is a claim range, and then if you have four, if we do a straw poll and it's four, then you can continue as written, if not, when we got down to legislation, again, this is really, when we get down to legislation, we'll do a strike through of a second.
Yeah, because I want to oppose all these changes, if I have to, I prefer this to.
If it becomes a free, free vote, though, the mayor decides with a no vote, it stays how it is.
Or besides with a yes vote, then it changes.
We can break, but we can break the resident language out and still prove the resident, I believe.
Right.
Well, the resident's still a part of the language.
That's what I mean, but, but as far as, like, separate resident from all these other, the other changes the staff recommended, and then.
I don't know, because we made a motion as a whole for you to change it, or you can mention it.
Well, that's from you guys.
Yes, you're right.
Council, that's just, yours is just a recommendation, yes, so my point is Monday, council, the board will say, no, we don't like, if you're the only two that like resident,